It's five o'clock. And we're going to call this regular meeting of five o'clock of the Victorville City Council. We have a call to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEcrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. I don't have any anyone in the audience for public comments, I have no cards. So we'll go directly to Declaration of Closed Session item by the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. And I'd also, for the record, like to note that you're also opening meetings for the various other sundry entities as well as the city as listed on the agenda. We have two closed sessions tonight. The first is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9 subsection B3B, and it pertains to the SEC investigation. And the second is real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. Real property is Hangar 681 out at the airport, and the negotiating parties are Keith Metzger and Pratt &amp; Whitney. And to the extent there is reportable action, we will come out and report that at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately preceding the seven o'clock meeting.
Any other items? At this point, we're going to recess for closed session.
Now, Doctor. Wonderful family. Their father came here as a bracero. How lucky we were to get him. Yeah, but it was so cruel.
I have your card, and it's seven o'clock. It's seven o'clock. We're going to call this meeting to order, the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council setting us the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and Victorville Housing District. Call the meeting to order. A roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEcrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
We have the closed session.
He's here.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had two closed sessions this evening. They are both set forth on the agenda. One was for the City Council, closed session pursuant to government code 54956.9, anticipated litigation, which is described in the agenda. And the second for the Airport Authority pursuant to government code 54956.8. Real estate negotiations concerning Hangar 681 at the airport, and the negotiating parties are listed on the agenda. At this point, there is no reportable action on either item.
I'm sorry, did I get ahead of myself here, Madam Clerk? Do we have a, we have the roll session?
The next item would be the invocation followed by the pledge.
Thank you. The invocation is going to be by Pastor Dan Rashid. If you'd come up, please.
Thank you, good evening.
I'm sorry, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with Police Chief Sam Lucia.
If you'll bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all that are gathered here today. Thank you for loving us, thank you for your abundant blessings, and thank you for life itself. In the scriptures, God, you have said that the citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, and since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice, we pray for our mayor, the various levels of city government, and in particular those assembled in this council. We're asking that you would graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony whenever there is honest disagreement. We pray for the agenda set before them, give them the assurance of what would please you and would benefit those who live and work around our beloved city of Victorville. In your blessed name, God, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Chief Lucia.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in time, we have some certificates. And I'm going to go down front, check with the city clerk here, because are there any changes? Do we have the two? Is that correct?
Yes, there is one presentation to be made by the mayor, and the second presentation is from Sandbag. They will be making a presentation.
Okay. So for the first presentation, for the teen violence awareness, is Regina Witherspoon-Bell here? If you'd come up down front. And then the second presentation, Madam City Clerk, was the Sandbag rep, Chad Costello.
That's correct.
PowerPoint presentation on the Interstate 10, Interstate 15 corridor project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and public. We really appreciate the opportunity to come out today to talk about some major projects that Sandbag is currently undergoing, some current studies that we have going on, the Interstate 10 freeway and the Interstate 15 freeway. I'll briefly just walk through some of the information relating to those studies so you can become a little better aware of some of the details, and you might be able to have some questions or feedback, and/or members of the public can also reach out to our website and give us any questions that we could also respond to. Briefly, Sandbag, as you know, is, has a major role in managing the transportation corridors throughout the county, playing a key role in managing the Measure I funds for this self-help county. One thing that we do is analyze the demand on these freeways and these corridors, both the Interstate 10 and the Interstate 15, not only looking through today, but also looking 50 years out. Currently, we have a, we're going through a tough time, a recession, challenging time right now, but a recent study came out from the State Department of Finance. We saw that they're anticipating over 60 percent of increased growth rate and population throughout the county. Obviously, we know the positive trend is there, but they have a wealth of statistics that back this up, that we have some major challenges to think about on the Interstate 10 and the Interstate 15 freeways. Obviously, I'm talking about two of the most heavy demand corridors throughout the county limits. Here you see highlighted portions of the Interstate 10, which encompasses 35 miles of Interstate 10 corridor extending from the LA County limits at San Bernardino County and extend to Ford Street in Redlands, taking 35 miles of that corridor. Another major corridor significance, and major significance to this city, is the Interstate 15, that extends from the SR 60 on the south limit and extends to the 395 right now. That's the, it's extending 33 miles, and that is the focus of our current study right now. I don't have time to go into the details of the five years that we've been studying these limits of these corridors, because I could give you background at a later time, if you'd like, on the limits of the 15 going north to the proposed high desert corridor limit. And there's a lot of background that goes into that. I won't dwell on that now, but if you'd like more information, I could provide that at a later time. But looking at these corridors representing over 66 miles of Interstate mainline, I'm going to talk about a couple of options that we're currently studying, so you can see some of the things we're considering. Obviously, the demand issues are well-known. We have increased traffic demands, the right-of-way is constrained in many of these areas. In some areas, they are not. In many areas, they are. For example, there are some open areas that where the right-of-way is adjacent to vacant properties and vacant lands. That area is not as constrained, obviously. But right now, I'm also studying the eight miles between LA County limit and the I-15, and I can line up 95 businesses and dealerships and restaurants, as well as shopping malls and centers, right? Where right-of-way is very constrained. And the reality of this is, you'll soon note, that we basically can add two lanes for these interstates, for these 66 miles. And the question is, what types of lanes and what kind of lanes are we going to build? That's going to be the summary of this presentation. And the last bullet is, what are we going to have those two lanes be with the limited funds that we do have when we're talking about traditional public funds? So basically, the question is, and I'm just here objectively mentioning it to you, do we just build more lanes, or do we manage the lanes that we have better, or do we try to do a combination of both? So I want to talk about managed lanes just briefly. There's basically two types that I'll be talking about tonight. HOV or carpool lanes that we know well, because we all travel them very often. They're managed by occupancy restrictions. We have examples down in the 10, and some are two-plus people or person occupancy restrictions, and some are three-plus. Some are hybrids. You have a portion of the I-10 in the El Monte segment coming out of downtown to the 605, and it is three-plus during the peak period, and it is two-plus off-peak. So that's the management mechanism. It has some limitations, obviously, because it's only occupancy. The other type of lane that we have is an express lane. It's managed by occupancy restrictions and a pricing mechanism. So it gives you more flexibility and tool to manage that lane, or that investment that you have on the freeway. If we look at the HOV lane alternative that we are currently studying for the Interstate 10, this lane on the I-10 is being studied from Haven on the Interstate 10 in Ontario, extending 25 miles to the east to Ford Street in Redlands. And this is one of the alternatives that we're taking forth. We would be extending the existing HOV that currently terminates near Haven and extending that for 25 miles. It would have the existing GP lanes, or general purpose lanes, and the auxiliary lane that you see at the right. And this is one of the alternatives that we're currently studying. Some of the benefits that that lane provides is that it does manage the traffic demand, it has a management mechanism, it increases corridor person throughput, it promotes carpooling, more people in those vehicles, and results in trip reductions, more people in the vehicle, in the cars, or less cars on the road. That's a good thing. Improves air quality, and we require no additional fees for that, because that is currently in the measure. Now, some of the concerns on HOV lanes that some people have remarked on is it has limited demand management, and this is what I meant by it has an occupancy restriction only to manage that. So as the demand increases and congestion on that interstate increases, then overall throughput, vehicles decrease. Travel time increases, because it takes longer for us to get home, all right? The trip reliability starts to decrease. And basically, you only have one way to solve that, and it's changing the HOV occupancy. And we have some challenges in doing that, and one thing we mention here is, we can change from a two-plus to a three-plus, but oftentimes, what happens is we have an empty lane syndrome. We have a lot of available capacity, then everybody's staring at that HOV lane and in our congested general purpose lanes, wishing that we could get in there. So we have a challenge there, just because of the mechanisms are limited for the HOV. Now, just let me show you the express lane alternative that we are currently studying on the I-10 and the I-15. And the alternative is, for most of the segment, not all of the segment, but most of it, is to try to fit two express lanes into the inside median, along with the four general purpose lanes and the auxiliary lane on the right side of the freeway. So essentially, doubling the lanes that we're trying to implement and put in. Here, we can, we think we can get in and install approximately two lanes instead of the one HOV lane. We do have some constrained locations for these express lanes where we cannot fit two. One of these key locations, for example, is between the 60 and the Interstate 10. We have major system-to-system interchanges there, major columns holding up those direct connectors, so we can only fit one lane within, between the 60 and the 10 along the 15. But once we get to Sixth Street, just north of the 10, we can open up and put two lanes in both directions. So you might be thinking, well, how am I going to get in and out? How do I access these lanes for the communities, the cities, along these corridors? Currently, we've worked with Caltrans over the last six months in developing a lot of complex geometry and geometrics that basically look at the requirements for weaving, vehicles weaving in and off each of the interchanges, so that they could safely get from the entrance ramp of an interchange, across the general purpose lanes into the express lanes, and then back off. And so each of these dot locations on these maps, I have some bigger maps here that, you know, if you can't see each one of these, each one of these points are access points where you can enter and exit these express lanes. Some of the benefits of the express lanes are similar to the HOV. Actually, the top three bullets are identical. They do basically the same things that the HOV lane does. The express lane, though, has three more bullets near the bottom that I want to point out. The express lanes basically provide a tool to generate revenue back to help pay for the overall facility. That's one. The express lane provides a reliable trip time that you would know how long it would take to get from point A to point B. Actually, a couple days ago, I just drove the Interstate 10 from downtown to the 605. These lanes were open for three days. I got to try them out brand-new. They told me it would take 12 minutes to get to the 605. I timed it to check if they were accurate. I got there in 11, 11 minutes. And basically, the point is, if I would have set my timer, just like I did when I walked up here, so I don't take up too much of your time, I think that would have taken me 52 minutes on average. So the point is, you know, instead of the 52 minutes, I paid, I think, $3.20, and I was glad to do it, when I needed to get there in 11, 11 minutes. So the reliable trip time is just a key factor to think about, because the point is, in comparison to the HOV lane, see, that's the mechanism you don't have available to manage. So that's just one thing to point out. The other thing is just the synergy potential with transit. We're meeting often with OmniTrans and other transit authorities and agencies about the opportunities to use and utilize their BRT system with the express lane to see if this might be an option that they could really use. And so far, we're getting very valuable input, and that they may be able to use that successfully. Actually, it's interesting, currently, they're saying the current congestion on both of these freeways negate and disallow them to use them in a BRT scenario for the most part. I don't know if you've been to San Diego, I-15 corridor coming out of downtown San Diego. They continue to extend those express lines to the north, and it's built all around the BRT system there. So this point in San Diego was emphasized in order to basically build and enhance an entire BRT system. And I'm not saying, you know, our I-10 and I-15 would be doing that. It would just be another tool for the bus authorities to be able to use it. Some of the concerns that express lanes, folks have said about the express lanes are, you know, that it's not equitable or fair among all the users. Or, well, we've already paid for the freeways, why would I pay more? And this is, you know, there is some truth to this. I mean, for the lanes that are out there today, I mean, we can go out there, and we paid for all those. I'm not sure when the pothole arises, did we, if we paid for every pothole, but, you know, there is some truth to this. The point is, though, we're widening new freeway here. We're adding, we're adding a ton of capacity, so we have to think about, for that new capacity, we haven't necessarily paid for all that new lane. There is, on the third bullet, some conversion of the existing HOV lane to an express lane. And we do have a portion of this in the eight-mile segment between LA County and the 15, where we're changing the utilization of the existing HOV lane. However, remember, the express lane acts as a carpool lane. So if the express lane is a two-plus requirement for HOV, then essentially, it's the same type of lane. So there's just, there's a lot of points to discuss on this point, this bullet. There's a point about their lack of benefit to the motors in the general purpose lane, because if I'm in congestion, I don't see the benefit. We have some studies that show that the speeds in the GP lanes have been benefited over two times in a lot of these express lanes throughout the country, and we're just, we're here to show and share some of that data and information as we continue the dialogue. Some say that congestion will be promoted in order to increase revenue for the express lanes, and really, that's, we don't, we don't see that as, you know, as too, well, in looking at other projects across the country, this point basically has been, congestion has been minimized in order to maximize throughput. And so the tolls were reduced to the amount to improve congestion, but also just maximize throughput was the primary goal. So what I'd like to do is just share, this is a long process, and this is an ongoing dialogue. There have been no decisions, so I'm not here to say anybody has decided on one or the other. That's the primary purpose of this presentation, to share with you that these options are being considered for your consideration and input and questions. We are in the preliminary study stage, where the traffic and revenue and the preliminary environmental studies are being done, and this phase will be completed in about 2017, so about four years from now.
Okay, you're going to have to wrap up. We're running.
Sure, I'll finish up right now. What I'd like to, just, here's a list of all the environmental studies that you're probably well aware of. The express lanes in the U.S., they're being installed and studied throughout the country. The green dots here are installed facilities that are working right now. The shaded ones are under construction right now, just so you see that we're looking at how these have provided solutions in other parts of the country. The other point is, the SCAG RTP network is considering our limits and our projects within the regional network, so regionally, we're consistent with exactly what's in the RTP. And essentially, just, I wanted to highlight an overall benefit of what these lanes do. This is an example of the 91, where the managed lanes versus GP lanes on the right side show a travel time of 11 minutes versus 15 minutes to get 11, you know, 10 miles down the freeway. So just so it shows a snapshot of what I was referring to earlier. And just last slide here, this is San Diego, actual results from Sandbag. Gary Gallegos came up a couple months ago and shared this with us, and he said, what I'd like to show you is, if we did nothing, we would be looking at travel times upwards of 87 minutes along a portion of the I-15 corridor in 2030. But because of the managed lanes that they were able to build and install, they're anticipating 45-minute travel times along their I-15. So this is just a snapshot that shows a benefit for their investment there. But again, I just want to point out, I'm just trying to share some objective information and details about the HOV lane and about the express lane, so you can, we can continue the dialogue, and you can ask us any questions that you might like to, or get involved in our community advisory groups or other public outreach. And so with that, I'll leave it and open it up to any questions you might have.
Well, Mr. Costello, I think what we need to do, because this is a very good presentation with a lot of information, I know there's going to be questions, unfortunately, this was a presentation at the beginning of the council meeting as opposed to
Sure.
... an agendized item later on.
No problem.
We probably need to have a study session sometime. We will ask our Sandbag rep to work with Sandbag to arrange that. That way, the council can have a longer period of time to analyze this and ask questions and have a better dialogue.
Sure, that would be, that would be no problem.
For now, we really do appreciate it. It's important information, and thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for all your time.
Madam City Clerk.
City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are no revisions for tonight's agenda. That's all I have, Mayor Cox.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. At this time, on the agenda is a public comment period. At the present time, I have three cards. Anyone can come forward and speak. We ask that you fill out a card. I have three. I'm going to take them in the order I received them. And the first one is Victor Valley High School Girl Soccer Team, Michelle Medina.
We're here to give thanks for sponsoring our soccer team.
Pull the microphone down just a little.
Sorry. And we're here, we're thankful for your support and everything you guys helped us with. We got to get certificates, our banquet, and sweatshirts, the ones we're wearing today. And we're here, we're very appreciative of everything you guys have done for us, and we're just here to say thank you.
Michelle, did you have a few words?
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry. I wanted to present a thank-you certificate to the people that sponsored the high school soccer team. Jim Cox, you're one of them.
Would you like me to come down there?
Please, please. Jim Kennedy.
Me too.
And Larry Huber. Yes.
Thank you very much.
And if I can take a picture with all of you and all the girls, so we can put it up at their school in their yearbook.
Where would you like us to stand?
Will all the girls want a picture too?
Yes, yeah.
The second card is... Lefleur? I can't, H-U-A-N-N-E?
It's Lumal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
L-U-A-N-N-E, okay.
Mayor, City Council, I, in our neighborhood, we have an ongoing problem. We've tried, I have tried working with animal control, have not had any success, wanted to bring it to your attention. We have a set of roaming dogs who are getting sicker and sicker. The city's been aware of it since the 25th of last month. I was on vacation since I've been back. Called yesterday, called again today, nobody would call me back. And I don't understand, I guess they need, as a community, they need us to get involved, but what kind of liability, and not that any of you can answer this, do I have to take as a private citizen to help them trap dogs? Because that's what they were telling me today on the phone. You know, I just, I don't understand. We can't, we can't get animal control. We have animals running. These two particular dogs are running in the streets at the corner of Squallian Third, Teton, Second Street, that entire area. They're terrorizing people walking with or without dogs. It's just, you know, it's a sad thing to see that for two weeks, we've had animals running around out there, and now that I get home, and now I'm calling, and they still won't call me back. They won't stop by my house. We did see them yesterday circling for about 20 minutes, but they're in the alleyway, so it's not going to exactly happen. You have to chase them out of the alley to do that. So, it's just really frustrating that, you know, as a person, you want to help these animals, but you also want to help the city, but you can't figure out who in the city to get to to get that help.
You just did. You will get a call.
That's why I came tonight. I'm like going, you know, I'm going to go to the city council meeting, because they're the people that can help me then finally.
Thank you. We have your number. I assure you, a staff member will call you.
I appreciate it very much. You guys have a good evening.
Jerry Lewis, excuse me, Jerry Laws? I'm sorry, I just looked down at it, I didn't, wasn't intended.
That's a little different. Marine, original lifeguard from Zuma Beach, but that was centuries ago. I just gave the mayor, the Honorable Mayor, and the City Council, and the whole crew here, a militia act of 1792. Now, I did not tape, I did not give the whole thing to them. They will have to go to, and anyone in this audience can go to, US Code Title 10, Section 311. That'll give you the history of the militia in 1790, yeah, 1792, and then it'll also give you the history when it was changed in 1917 by our wonderful Theodore Roosevelt. And again, 1969, I think it was changed so it would let the Naval and National Guard Women be able to be part of the militia. In the old days, everyone was part of the militia, but it actually, it came out to be from age 17 to 45 was the organized militia. Anyone over that age, except during the Civil War, when they get to 65, is the unorganized militia. That means old folks like me, anybody that's over 45, is the unorganized militia. Now, the pictures I gave the Honorable Mayor, we had a big turnout, but we didn't get to the newspaper right, because they didn't get the right information to get there. We had over hundreds of people from all over part of the valley, every town in our area, our valley, and down below, and all over other places came in, some came in, I think, from San Diego, to participate in this rally, which was a right to keep and bear arms. Now, every governor of the state is head of militia. The National Guard's this big, the Army's that big, the militia's that big. And secondly, the governor is the head of militia, the mayor is the head of the local militia, and then the city, or the city, and then the county has their own militia. So, you are supposed to have an AR-15 or M1, or if you're old like me, M-14 or M1, home. So, when the city calls you up, and they would probably use a deputy sheriff to kind of help out along that line, in case we had to put a surrounding perimeter around our area up here to protect our home. Now, these people, these governors who don't understand anything about the militia, especially the one in New York and a few others, have lost their, what they did is, they actually broke their oath to the state constitution and the federal constitution. And us military men, when we raise our hand, or any of you, when you were sworn in in this honorable Victorville, you held your hand up, if I remember right, is that correct? All right? To sustain the constitution and the state constitution, or local constitution, and federal constitution. Now, it's God, family, country in that order. So, when they say you can't have a right to keep and bear arms, and by the way, my understanding, the little Connecticut situation in Connecticut, they had two minor schools there who did have concealed weapon carries.
10 seconds.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you finished? Thank you.
Is that it?
I indicated I'd give you-
How many more seconds I got, or do you have a question?
Two more. I told you I'd give you a little extra time. Two seconds.
Two seconds. Well, I've been on the radio 40-some years, and as my grandson, who got hit on his last mission in Afghanistan, he says, "Grandpa, why do we have Vietnam and Korea?" And I said, "We went to fight communism." Now, you may not like this answer. He says, "Why do we have a Marxist-Favian-Socialist-Communist Progressive in the White House?" And I said, "Because the American people voted him in." But there again, it's God, family, and country, and we'll do our duties, and God will do his. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laws. Now's the time to continue with the agenda. I have no further cards. Is there anyone else, no one else wanted to address the City Council? Library Board of Trustees, there are no items at time of posting. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, no items at the time of posting. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, consent item, number four on the agenda.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, on item number five under SCLA and item number eight under the successor agency, I need to abstain, as my insurance firm does business with Bradco.
Did you say five and eight, or five A?
Five and eight.
On a written communications, item five. Amendment number three to the Consultant Professional Service Provider Agreement between Bradco Company Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency and SCLA-A. This item came before the City Council before. There was a request for additional information, and it's quite a bit of additional information. I've read it. Are there any questions from the council members?
I have a question. So, this is the third extension to this contract? Is that correct?
This is the Third Amendment. We originally bid it and awarded it in 2011, so this is dealing with the first, a second, this will be the third term.
And how many more is there?
This agreement, I believe it's written in the staff report, I'm scrolling through it really quickly, but I believe this agreement is for one year with options to renew at two additional one-year extensions.
So, next year, it will go out for RFP?
That's at the discretion of the authority. If the authority decides that it's satisfied with the services, it can decide to continue on with the services, or it can decide to go ahead and solicit for proposals again.
Question, if the council approves this, will this come back to the City Council in one year, or does that have to be a part of the City Council's approval if we want it to come back in one year?
Can you restate that?
If, you indicated in the answer that this is one year with two options, or?
Two one-year options.
Yeah, is that options on mutual or on behalf of the individual who's going to provide the service? In other words, at the end of the year, does the staff bring this back to the council? Or can staff go ahead and grant the option?
At the direction of the authority.
At the direction of the authority, okay.
Authority has the option.
Oh, I see. Okay, and this, since there's no RDA anymore, the scope of work has changed, correct?
The scope of work has changed. It's evolved from what was originally representation for vacant land, to industrial pieces of industrial land, and also including one commercial piece of land, because we cannot represent with certainty as to when we are actually going to sell those properties. We've decided to pull those off. We evolved in the Second Amendment to include leasing services needed at SCLA, and this Third Amendment effectively captures those services sought under the Second Amendment to continue leasing services at SCLA, but altogether drop off the vacant land representation.
Normally, am I correct, Mr. Mayor Cox, if the scope of work changes, don't we go out for RFP, reissue?
I would defer that to either Doug Robinson, City Manager, or the attorney. I'm not sure what the rules are on that.
Well, there's not a rule that necessarily covers that. If the work is significantly different, we would go out for RFP. I think this work is effectively very similar. It's industrial in nature, as opposed to the commercial brokerage that you approved at the last meeting.
I really, I strongly believe that three extensions for this is excessive. I think the scope of work has changed, and there's a lot of, you know, companies out there that are eager to have a chance at this contract, and I think that we should open it up for RFP.
Mr. Mayor, that's certainly within the council's prerogative, if that's your direction.
I have a question. The last meeting, we discussed that there was an invitation that went out, and several companies had the opportunity, I believe only two companies came in and met with staff. This is different? This didn't follow that procedure? There was no RFPs or RFQs on this proposal?
No, in this particular case, in fact, we illustrated in the staff write-up that there was a process followed. It was the process that is the city's adopted purchasing process, so we did go through standard RFP selection process. The item, I think, that you're speaking to is an item that's separate and distinct, that the city had initiated for brokerage services relating to city assets, particularly, my recollection is some office space here at City Hall, the Transit Center downtown are the two that are coming to mind right away. And the distinction there, and I think it's important to note, the distinction being substantively different than the services of industrial leasing, totally different expertise, totally different responsibility, totally different understanding. So, that's the reason why there's, in this case, the airport independently or separately wanting to continue to retain these services with Bradco.
But they did or did not go out for RFP?
They did go out for RFP, January 25, 2011, and RFP was advertised in local newspapers, as well as sent to Colbell Banker, Bradco, Lean Associates, Golden State Professionals, and CB Richard Ellis, reading from the staff report. At the last meeting, there was concerns, because there was not copies of those advertisements included in the agenda item. This is back before you today with minor modifications to the item to include those attachments. So, all of that history of the RFP process, this has since come back to the council one time for an amendment, and this would be another amendment at the recommendation of staff, due to the fact that there is work progressing on these parcels and on these projects, and we need additional work. Certainly, it's within the council's discretion to direct staff to go out for another RFP if you should choose. At this time, the staff recommendation is to not do that. We will revisit this in a year if it's approved and decide if it is still advantageous to continue with this contract or to do an RFP at that time.
I was just thinking that if the scope of work changed, maybe that there's other brokers that would be willing to now bid the project.
The thing that bothers me about making a change here, I remember the process we went through, I was satisfied with it then. If staff is not dissatisfied, I'm not hearing compelling reasons to change, but the thing that concerns me is that if a broker who steps into this task with the time and energy that's involved in getting up to speed on this, first of all, it's going to have to be someone who deals with commercial buyers. Typical brokerage firm isn't going to be able to handle this kind of task, but if they know that every time the thing changes a little bit, we're going to go out for an RFP and perhaps switch brokers, it's going to undermine their interest in being involved in this. This is a longer-term project, and it's a, I think it takes, requires a long-term committed effort. And the idea of changing horses every year or two, because the nature of the work might change a little, it doesn't make any sense to me. And keep in mind, there's not a broker in this community or any other community who can't bring a deal to the city, to the authority on this property. So, I just, I can't see any compelling reason to make a change, frankly. Other input from the staff? No further questions? Chairs, for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin absent and Councilmember Vias voting- Motion carries with Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin absent and Councilmember Vias voting no.
Item number six. Request to approve general services provider agreement with Treadwell Support Services for the ILS/AWS/DME/Tower Maintenance Service Contract in the amount of $57,000 annually. And it's nice to have all of those abbreviated numbers, and I'm not going to read the memorandum to find out what they are to explain it, but I wish in the body of these from now on, staff would spell those out. Be helpful to everyone. Any questions from the council? Item six, ready for motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven. Companion to Victorville Water District, item 11, and City Council, item number 15, and question to the city attorney. These are separate items on the agenda. Can they all be taken together, or do you need three separate actions?
No, they can all be considered at the same time. You can consider the staff reports and even do the motion, as long as it's understood that you are voting on all three items.
Then we're going to combine Water District, item number 11, City Council, item number 15, and item number seven, written communications from Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. No questions? The motion?
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Can we get that to our auditor as quickly as possible, please?
Stay on the phone with him.
Thank you.
Item eight. What is the difference, written, this companion to SCLA, item number five?
Your, the understanding was that your motion on number five included both of these items, since you considered both at the same time.
Item nine. Under the Victorville Water District, request to accept the notice of completion for the Security Surveillance System project at the SCLA wastewater treatment facility.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Ten, written communications. It's a request to approve the service provider agreement for hazardous waste transportation services, Inc. No questions? Chair is ready for a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Mayor Pro Tem, may I get a vote from you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 11 has been taken care of, correct?
That's correct.
Item 12. Notice of intent to adopt notice of exemption for the various sewer diversions and water PRV installation projects. Question to the councils, what does PRV stand for?
Mr. Mayor, that is a pressure relief valve, and your message to me was to spell these things out. It was heard loud and clear.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on item number 12. If there are no questions from the staff, I am going to open the public hearing at this time. I do not have any cards on the subject matter, but if anyone wants to speak at the public hearing, they should come forward. There is no one coming forward. I have no cards. I'm going to close the public hearing on this matter. Any questions from the council members?
I just want to make sure I don't have a conflict of interest.
No, you're just approving a negative deck. There's no other decision being involved other than the negative deck, so I don't see a conflict.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin.
Mr. Mayor, just for informational sake, those of you in the Luna Road, La Mesa, Mesa-Linda, and Amethyst area, these projects are all intended to take place on the week of spring break from school, so that traffic routes aren't impacted during school hours, and hopefully those will all progress very well.
The motion carries unanimously.
Just for the record, I'd like to correct, it's not actually a negative deck. It's a notice of exemption, but it's the same tax, same kind of thing, it's a secret exemption.
Agenda item number 13, it's a consent calendar. There are three items, A, B, and C. Request to approve commercial demand, number 13, in the amount of four million and $544,160. B, request to approve payroll demand schedules, number 8A, for payroll January 9 through February 1, in the amount of $918,066.16, covering checks, number 27899 through 27915, and advice numbers 188653 through 189002. Number C, request to accept notice of completion for the Elmets Two Eagle Ranch Basale Concrete Work to mitigate Basale erosions.
Want to check with council, see if I have a conflict on item C?
Again, this is just a notice of completion, so it would have no impact on you. I don't believe there's any conflict here.
No further questions? For motion?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 14. For the council meeting, as a request to adopt the final mitigated negative declaration, FBLP lift station enforced main and filed a notice of determination within five days of the recommended approval.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Am I correct that number 15 has been taken care of? Or did I miss that? Or did I get it wrong?
That one has been voted on. That one has been voted on.
That's what I thought. Item 16. Request to adopt resolution number 13-006, and title, do I have to read this resolution for the record, or just note?
Not for the resolutions, only on ordinances, you need the title.
Right, thank you. All the members have the resolution, are they right? Are there any questions from council? Question, we need a motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias, may I get a vote from you? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
There, sorry. Agenda item number 17, destruction of documents for the City Clerk Finance Administration Services Development and Engineering. Any questions of the city clerk?
Yeah, just one. We have a standard record retention destruction policy, don't we?
Yes, we do. It's adopted by resolution of the council.
And this is all consistent with that policy?
Yes, it is.
The concern that I have is that I feel like the timing of this isn't good, since we haven't closed the investigation to the SEC. So, destroying any documents kind of makes me uneasy.
We had asked for clarification, I think a couple of years ago, from the SEC regarding that, because as you are aware, there was a previous prohibition on us destroying any documents. They specifically set forth the types of documents that they wanted us to certainly keep, and none of the documents pursuant to this destruction request fall within those categories, so we believe it's fine to destroy these documents. They don't fall within the types of documents that the SEC asked us to retain.
Would it not be better just to wait until after the investigation is closed, just in case they change their mind, or?
You know, I don't have a problem with that. My understanding is, it's a, it's pressure on your system right now with respect to the amount of capacity that you have and the amount, the volume of these documents. My understanding is, a lot of these documents are essentially receipts for people attending civic activities, like at the pool and at the gymnasiums and things like that. So, these are just receipts and documents that extraneous, but my understanding is they take up a lot of capacity, and I...
Yes, that's correct. Not only the, on the server for the digital documents, but the hard copies of documents that are being stored at our record center, they're, we're basically running out of room over there, and a lot of these activities, cashier receipts and things like that, they are ongoing. They are going to continue to accumulate, so it's a matter of space as well as managing the records.
I have a question. Can the city clerk and/or the city attorney and/or the city manager assure the council that there are no prohibitions in the destruction of these records, and they are following the law?
That is correct. The SEC has set forth what it believes are the important documents for us to retain, and the documents that are subject to this request do not fall into any of those categories.
I just feel really uneasy about it.
Questions from the council?
Do you have the ability to delay, or not, or?
Well, we can certainly delay, if that's what the council desires. It's just a matter of documents that are going to continue to accumulate.
Mr. Laws ask to address the council on this matter?
I want to ask a quick question. All these old documents that we have, we don't have room for them, or are we putting them on CD so we'll have a record later on in case we have to come up to protect ourselves for some reason?
Actually, there are a lot of documents that it's been determined that we don't have to necessarily retain the hard copies, but we do need to keep them in some format, and in those cases, we have kept those on our document imaging system, and those are considered the originals.
Well, I'm glad my parents kept theirs, because the Laws go back to 1600 in North Carolina. They own it.
Thank you, Mr. Laws. Any other questions from council? Chairs open for a motion?
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin.
Oh, I raised it.
Um, Mayor Cox?
I raised it. I don't know what happened. I'll vote yes.
Okay. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
The next item is agenda item number 18. City Council appoint Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin as the city's delegate to the General Assembly. The General Assembly will be held May 2 and 3 in Palm Desert. When this item came up earlier, as the mayor, I had indicated that we, when we were making the appointments, he indicated that he would like to continue to serve, and I agreed with that, but I found out then that it has to be a former council, so it's on the agenda for the city council's appointment. If there's any questions, chairs open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 19 is a request, the reappointment of Ronald Hankerson to the Community Services Advisory Committee, and a request the City Council approve Councilmember Garcia's reappointment. Open for motion? If there's no objections?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin. Councilmember Vias? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is agenda item number 20. I think it's, like this is the second time or maybe the third time that the city council has had a question on this. At the last council meeting, Mr. Kennedy indicated it might not hurt, or might want to consider council policy for distribution of business cards and name badges, planning commissioners, advisory committees. I checked with my appointee, who indicated that he has a name plate when he comes to the city council, or when he comes to the planning commission meetings, he doesn't give any cards out, and he doesn't want any. I don't know what the rest of you feel about this. The second thing that occurred, initially, I felt that we really needed a policy for this. On the other hand, I began to look into this, and the city attorney can explain this. I wondered if I could appoint someone to represent me for meetings that I couldn't attend, such simple things as cutting a ribbon, and found out that I could not. That city council members, if I'm not available, the mayor pro tem, as appointed by the city council, is the individual that represents me. If the mayor pro tem can't be available, then it's the other members of the council. City council members may designate someone to act on their behalf as an individual, but they cannot designate somebody to act on their behalf as a city council person. And therefore, if neither councilman are available, it then goes to the city manager to represent the council, and if the city manager's not available, he has the city, assistant city manager or other individuals that he gets to appoint. On the basis of that, I don't see any reason for having any kind of a policy. Open for discussion.
Well, personally, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. I don't think it's necessary, but I, if there is a policy that staff can develop that makes sense, I'd be willing to hear it. That's really my only thought on it.
Any comments, other members?
I haven't had any requests from my appointees to either the planning commissioner or Community Services Advisory Committee to have such items, and all the time I've been here, I know, I think former councilmember Rothschild requested when he was the mayor that the planning commission have name badges, but even in those days, I can't recall ever wearing it. So, you know, it's just one of those things, I, you know, it was something he wanted for the planning commission, but I don't know that planning commissioners actually ever wore them, even to the meetings, so I just, I don't know what the purpose would be.
Councilmember Garcia? Have any comments or questions?
No, I don't have any comments.
Answer questions, Ms. Vias? Okay, then, there's, it's on the written communications, whether or not the city council wants the direct staff to prepare for this or not. Chairs open for motion. Or it dies if there's no motion or second. There's no motion? There's no motion that mattered? Oh, I'm sorry, there is.
There is a motion by Councilmember Garcia. Second by Councilmember Vias.
The motion then is in accordance that the city council directs staff to prepare for council's consideration of formal policy. Is that correct?
Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries with Mayor Cox and Mayor Pro Tem McEchrin voting no.
Next item, item 21, is a report on projected bond debt shortfalls.
That was my request, and I guess one of the questions I really want to ask before we go any further with this is, let me get your wording, Doug. That you would provide this information to the extent that they are able to do so within the confines of laws and regulations pertaining to the public disclosure. My question is, is what I'm asking for going to be so limited by those requirements that it won't be useful information?
I don't believe that it will. What we have to be careful of is if we're going to make a public disclosure that is material to the bondholders, that they all have the opportunity to receive that notice at the same time, and so the federal government has set up an electronic system that we have to post those things to. In years past, when we've had a negative issue that has come up, that we have had to notify the bondholders of, we've posted it to that system and then almost immediately informed the council. If we were to have done so the other way around, we potentially could have violated the law. In this instance, I know that we do have some projections as to what our consultants believe the property tax numbers are going to come in at, and for that reason, the property tax increment may come in at over the next few years, and we can certainly share those projections. Those projections have been shared through that system already. I don't know that it's going to be particularly meaningful information, but if it's something the council would like to see in a public agenda, we could do that, or we could simply get a copy of those projections to everyone in the council.
Well, the reason, the reason it's important to me is that whenever that event occurs, and we know it's occurred in the past, we know it's going to occur in the we know it's occurred in the past, we know it's going to occur in the future, it hits the daily press on the front page, "Oh, my goodness, the city of Victorville has defaulted on its bonds." And that's a mischaracterization of what's actually happened. Maybe a technically correct statement, but it's inflammatory, and it's all the result of what's happened to real estate values and how the tax increment affects our bond payments. We know this now. I just would like for the public to know, we know it's going to continue happening. And it'll happen, what, once a year, twice a year? Hard to know, but I'd like to get in front of it so the daily press won't be so interested in splashing it across the front page.
Okay, a couple of corrections. One, the city of Victorville has never defaulted on its bonds. That is the airport authority. It's a separate legal entity, but I know you know that.
But I don't think that's the way the newspaper headlines splash it.
If I had any control over the newspaper headlines, well, I'm not even going to finish that sentence. They would be different, let's say. Getting back to your request, I think it is valuable to share that information with the public and to educate them on that regard. I actually have done some writing just recently on the separation of the city from the airport authority and how they are completely separate legal entities. It happened to be a blog post that I did, but I can make it slightly more formal and provide it to the council at the next meeting very easily as a simple informational memorandum. And then we can also include, to the extent that we have it, what the projections look like over the next few years. It's a very fluid situation, however. The item that you approved tonight on the three agendas actually repays $20 million plus $5 million in interest to the airport authority. Those were bond funds that were being held that were unused, and they were lent to the water district for a couple of years. That's now been repaid, and in the very near future, not next meeting or probably not even the meeting after that, but in the very near future, certainly during this fiscal year, staff's going to bring back an item requesting the council give direction on what to do with that $25 million. There's several options that we're exploring to make sure that we have all of the options covered and well cover the pros and cons of each of them. We could, the council could, acting as the airport authority board, elect to buy down those bonds, which would mean additional increment could come to the other bonds. The council could direct staff to pursue a project that was, you know, part of that bond issuance. The council could direct staff to look at another, a couple of other options that we don't even want to mention yet because we don't know that, what the legal strings may be attached to that. So it's a very fluid situation. To give you a report now would be, quite honestly, historic data because there is a lot of change happening.
You think that presentation in the council will include any projections about future flows?
Yes, it will. In fact, it'll look at what they're currently projected at and then what may happen to them, you know, under the different scenarios that will present.
I'm sure one option we might consider is to keep that available to come up with, to cover shortfalls.
If that is a legally viable option, that certainly is one that we would like to pursue. It's more of an appearance issue, in all honesty, but it's certainly one that bears, sorting out the legal strings that may be attached to pursuing that strategy.
Well, I'd be willing to drop this item and let it come forward to us when you're ready to do that presentation.
Comments from the other council members? I think it's a very important item. There has been a lot written about shortfalls and so on. I think it's extremely important that this council be transparent, that we keep everyone informed, including the news media. I think that at a time when there's something to report that's meaningful, it would be an understood request to the city council to administration to automatically agendize that for a full disclosure so that we would all be informed at the same time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Agenda item number 22, code enforcement. Well, we're, it's, okay, I will grant you this. Please be brief. I mentioned last time I was here, and it's in the county facility, that we own that Calico Ghost Mine. I mentioned also that Indio County is using their gold and silver mines to pay their bills. Now, the county, the mine belongs to San Bernardino County, and San Bernardino County belongs to the cities of the cities that are in San Bernardino County. So I'm going to work with the county again one more time and see if we can't get that silver mine going and all that barracks is sitting on the side and help pay our county bills and maybe help pay our city bills. And maybe give every little bag of silver to every person that's in the county. The reason I say that is because we use silver in our cell phones and everywhere else. We own it. And like I said last time, I used to walk Walter Nott around there once in a while on his birthday. And they'd be very happy to find out that the people in this valley were using the things they have to help pay their bills because you're sure not going to get it from the federal government. Thank you. This item was placed on the, this next item was placed on the agenda at my request or whether or not the city council wants to discuss this. Quite frankly, I was extremely pleased at the code enforcement activities that Mr. Webb and his department is carrying out. Bill Webb, stand up a second. He's the development director. I don't think the council's had very much interchange with him. We have two new council members. The whole council is appreciative of your work in this area, and we need a lot more, I believe. So this is something that we'll talk to the council today. I went out and took some pictures. I'll be distributing those for the council. You have a hard job. I know of some instances where there was an attempt by code enforcement to get compliance, and there was some reluctance because members of the council in the past did not want to appear to have big government overriding the small citizen and causing a hardship. And that's certainly not my intent. I can assure you, based upon my discussions with the councilmen here, that is not their intent. But we do need to have some strict code enforcement in those areas where there's a problem. I have talked to a couple of groups, and when I mentioned the code enforcement, I get more nods on that than almost any other thing because almost every neighborhood in the city is affected by someone who is intent on filling up their backyard with garbage or just simply not complying with being a good citizen. There comes a time when it takes more than just a warning or a letter, it becomes a citation. And I want to make sure that the council's in agreement. I want this discussed by the city council because I indicated to one councilperson, if there's an indication that the city council is not going to support the staff, it's very simple. We put the ordinance back on the agenda, we have a public hearing, and we amend the ordinance so staff clearly knows what is going, what they're going to enforce and what they're not. We have nuisances that exist that are not being enforced because it might cause a hardship on someone, and yet it's an attractive nuisance, and I know for a fact that there could be, could be, could be, some liability to the city if they're not strictly enforced. And I want to move in that direction. Also, it's pretty well understood from people I've talked to that if you come down to get a permit to put a fence against the sidewalk, which is on the city right away, they're not going to give you a permit, but put it up on the weekend and violate the law knowingly, and there's a good chance they won't make you take it down because both the neighbors have the fence that are in violation. It's wrong. It's no different than individuals driving on a road and knowing that if they speed, they're not going to get a ticket. And that's the worst message that you can possibly send to anyone. They need to know that we have standards here. We're proud of this city. We want to make this city as attractive and beautiful as we possibly can, and I think we want to have all the people of the neighborhoods know that we're very serious about this. We want to clean up the neighborhoods. We've gone through some terrible times with all the foreclosures. The other item that I do want the council to discuss is that there's a number of houses that are in neighborhoods that aren't for sale, and the banks won't talk about it. And they have gone through from a maintained building to windows that are broken out with four-by-eight-foot sheets of plywood, attractive nuisances, people are breaking into them, and people are living in the houses, and yet, for some reason that I do not understand, I don't know if it's an issue the city can even address, the banks aren't interested in making them available for sale, nor are they interested in fixing them up. Surely, there's something that the city can do. Open for discussion with the other council members.
This is something that, I'll tell you the truth, I need education on code enforcement. I don't know enough about it to comment when people complain. Is this something we should have in more of a studies kind of session where we can get educated about what you do?
If I could, yes. Actually, the city manager had suggested that in the upcoming months. I think as times change and things change, our priorities change. And as you can see here, there's council priorities that we were directed to, but there's things like green pools that are a danger to children that has become, what is that? Our sixth most frequent case that we've been working on in the last couple of years is draining swimming pools and securing the properties. So whereas the neighbors are frustrated when they see boarded-up houses and it takes a while to deal with the bank, we're actually trying to save lives by draining pools and hitting the most urgent things. We never expected that. The council never directed us to do that, but it's a life-saving measure. So first and foremost, it's about safety. And second to that, we deal with primarily building and, say, building issues and zoning issues. And our department has inherited the business license division a year and a half ago, which fits in great with development and has been working really smoothly. That brings a whole bunch of other issues with it. So there's our standard routine grease traps inspections, things of those sorts that we do throughout the year. Over the last 10 years or so, the 10 years that I've been here, the council has directed us to be reactive. And there was a time when code enforcement was out, you know, picking up drunks in the park and doing police work. That's pretty much stopped, and the police handle the police issues, and code enforcement handles actual municipal code issues. It's all we can do at this point with about 3,000, I think, cases a year coming in, mostly complaints, just to handle the complaints. So sometimes people are frustrated, but if they didn't complain, they're not in the stack of complaints, and there's not a lot of time for these few guys to be driving around town looking for problems in a city this big. If our direction is to be a little bit more proactive, we're good with that. What I would ask is that, from the work sessions on, that we look at some other municipalities that have since actually adopted policies, like the mayor has spoken about dealing with banks, with a little more teeth than what we have. Our code enforcement and business license, part of the code, has not been updated in probably 20 years or so. We did do the rest of the development code, I think on this, Councilmember Vias's first meeting, brought in the rest of the development code all updated. Knowing we were going to get business license down the line, we waited for that. And I think the time is right, and we'd like to perhaps have a workshop looking at different options and strengthening the code we have and updating it. And I think that would give us the ability to be a little more proactive and enforce and find the proper entities. We've never had to deal with banks before. We're doing our best with no code. So I totally agree with that direction, and I think that's, it's more about procedures and policies and ordinances at this point to get us started and then see what we need to actually implement them.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any questions from council members to Mr. Webb? I think this would fit into, we're going to be, we're going to be taking on the budget in the not-too-distant future, and I think this might fit right into how we're going to deal with this, whether or not we're going to remain reactive or proactive. And very simply, that means that if an individual complains, they do their best to respond. If an individual doesn't complain, they're busy responding to the complaints, and that means that they ignore those that they might know that exist. It's not an easy task. It's not an easy position they're put in. And I do believe that the city council can discuss this. I think it would be good for the city to discuss it, to discuss it, and I think it fits in with the budgeting process. Any comments or questions from the council members? If not, I would like to have this set for a study session in about 30 days, if the city manager could arrange that. Any questions to that? Okay, thank you very much. Item number 23, discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Members of the council have items?
Mr. Mayor, yesterday I had a constituent make me aware of an article in the Chicago Tribune about a company that this city does business with called Redflex and the corruption and bribery that went on in the city of Chicago with respect to their red light camera system. I definitely have some concerns about whether or not that occurred here, but I feel that grand jury, the SEC, everyone that's looked at this city, if something like that would have occurred, they would have found it. But I do definitely have some serious problems with us doing business with the firm that admitted to this wrongdoing. So I would like to see that contract agendized in whatever fashion we can. Obviously, I defer to our city attorney with respect to how we actually get that done, but quite frankly, I'm ready to see them go now.
Certainly, we can look at the contract and agendize that item and see if, and I'll tell you, if you have options, depending on the language of the contract, and we have any possible opportunities to get out of it.
Of course, I would appreciate the city council's concurrence. That's how we've been practicing this, but that's what I'd like to see on a future agenda.
I definitely support that.
I believe that this should be discussed in depth with the leaders, with the attorney looking at this. I don't want to relate to anything that happened in Chicago. Probably be prohibited from doing business with anyone who does business in Chicago. Any other questions from, any other items from council members? Not on this matter. Any other comments, council members? 24. Presentation of reports by staff and council members. And we will start with the city manager and work from my left to my right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of times, I like to use this time to highlight a city employee, and in this case, I'm actually highlighting someone who isn't a city employee, but he's just as loyal as any city employee that I know of. Jimmy Hall, who is the general manager at the Green Tree Golf Course, works for Billy Casper Golf, and he recently won their national award for the Rookie of the Year General Manager Award for exuding above and beyond performance in all areas of club management. I know some folks have issues with the way the golf course looks right now. Their focus is on improving the bottom line for the benefit of the city and the citizens of Victorville. In the two and a half years under Billy Casper Golf, golf rounds are up 17,589 versus what it was three years ago. That's an annual number. Revenue growth is up over $500,000, and the bottom line is actually improved by nearly $1 million. So for all of those reasons, and also for finishing in the best customer service surveys in the western region and top five in the company, Jimmy won the Rookie General Manager of the Year, and I just want to congratulate him for that.
Thanks to Jimmy. Thank you, Doug. Other items?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Garcia? Councilman McEckern?
You heard enough from Sandback tonight, so I won't go into that, but I did want to inform the council if you hadn't already been informed. I do and will enjoy the pleasure of serving on the Southern California Association of Governments Regional Council. There was no one else that put their name in, and so because of that, I'm the default winner of that election.
That's not true. They knew you were going to be a candidate, and they didn't want to compete against you.
Landslide.
And courage. Ms. Vias?
No, none at this time.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, one thing. We took some action tonight on this agenda that basically closed the chapter and closed the book on a painful and difficult past experience. Really want to get into a discussion of the decisions about building the Foxborough Power Plant. But what I do want to do is give credit to the five people who had the courage and the conviction to pursue this lawsuit against the engineering company. And I'm talking about Terry Caldwell and Mark Rothschild, Joanne Allman and Rudy Camrealis and Ryan McEckern. We sit here today looking like we're the heroes because the good thing happened while we're here, but it was those five folks about four years ago who really did demonstrate the courage and the courage of their convictions to pursue this, and it's resulted in a recovery of $54 million for the city of Victorville. And I personally want to thank them, and I think we all owe them a word of thanks.
On that note, thank you all for coming to this council meeting. On that note, thank you all for coming to this council meeting. This meeting is adjourned, and I will be more than happy to stay and talk to you.